City Commission Meeting for December the 1st, 2015 is now...
In session.
In session and ordered. Madam Clerk, will you call the roll?
Commissioner Abraham?
Present.
Commissioner Gault?
Present.
Commissioner Rhodes?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Kayler.
Okay. And tonight, we will introduce Claire Kelly from Paducah Tillman High School, a junior in the American Studies class, to give our Pledge of Allegiance. After we get it started, we'll...
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to its republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, are there any additions or deletions?
No, sir.
Richard Roof, I believe you are next up with the annual report from Barkley Regional Airport.
Thank you, Commissioners, Mr. Peterson. It won't take much of your time. And Alan, you can start the stopwatch now if that makes you feel comfortable. I've distributed to you our annual audit, which is clean. It's unqualified, and that makes us happy. We try to keep it that way. As you know, and have seen in the media, SkyWest was just awarded another two-year contract beginning February 1st, 2016, to provide us with another 24 months of jet service into Chicago. That takes a lot of worry off our part that we might have lost that service, but that's good to have that guaranteed. So far, traffic is up again this year, and this will be, if everything holds out through the end of the year, SkyWest's best year of the six years that they've been here. As of Week 46, which was about a week back, we had experienced 40% fewer cancellations than we had a year back. So, SkyWest is making a sincere effort to improve that reliability. But when we talk about cancellations, they're either controllable, which means it falls under the carriers' purview, such as maintenance, flight crews, that sort of thing, or we run into air traffic control and weather issues. Of the cancellations, we're only looking at a total of about 1.2% being controllables. The rest are just due to air traffic and weather situations, mostly in the Chicago area. So, the advantage of Chicago, obviously, is tremendous connections. The disadvantage is the amount of air traffic. That remains the busiest major hub in the United States. On a 24-hour basis, if you sit there at the stopwatch, there'll be a takeoff or a landing every 35 seconds. Obviously, not much goes on at 2:00 in the morning, so come bank hour, when things really get pushed, it cuts down significantly on the interval between operations. So, fortunately, they have opened in the past two years, two additional runways at O'Hare, and we hope that kind of takes up some of the issue of flight delays. Because, obviously, any kind of weather or anything, strong surface ones in the wrong direction, and they go from five available runways to two available runways, a takeoff or landing every 35 seconds begins to disappear on us. But so far this year, again, passenger traffic is up. Our tenants are experiencing somewhat better revenue. The negative portion of it is, obviously, unfunded mandates from the federal government, specifically FAA. And I can certainly tell you some interesting stories on that over the last couple of months. I would indicate to you that in the last two years, there has been a significant change in the way the airline industry operates. When there were 10 or 12 major carriers here, the idea was, go for market share. If you can beat somebody else out of a market, particularly at a large hub, then sooner or later, you'll make money. And you know, for 25 years, that didn't work. The current philosophy is bottom line. And if the route does not produce money, or if the airplane can go somewhere else and make more money, then that's what's going to happen. Then we've had the mergers. We're down, basically, to three legacy carriers, American, Delta, and United, and Southwest. As you know, Southwest does no regional feed. Delta is backing out of regional feed, looking at what they've done at Memphis and Cincinnati. Leaves only American and United out there in terms of a major carrier who's still interested in regional feed. So, that's a challenge for smaller communities such as us, because there aren't just too many options left when it comes to a major carrier connection. So, basically, we've got an industry now that's gone into an oligopoly, and that's a sad thing to see, really. And I think at some point, the Justice Department's going to be wishing they really hadn't approved the last American and U.S. Airways merger, because it's really taken a lot of competition The thing that will be facing us probably within the next four to five years will be an upgrade in aircraft size. This is already happening on the contract routes where the major carrier pays someone like SkyWest to operate a flight on their behalf. That's a contract operation. Ours is, basically, a pro-rate operation to where United and SkyWest split the fare. The carriers are going tremendously toward two-cabin service now on regional equipment, and so we're seeing a lot of 70, 80, 90, and 100-seat aircraft ordered for those contract routes for the major carriers. That will not trickle down to the essential air service markets for some time, because, obviously, if you have a community that can barely justify a 50-seat jet, when you're starting to look at a replacement of a 70- or 80-seat aircraft, the economy goes totally out the window. So, our challenge will be, over the next couple of years, to make sure we can keep our load factors up. So, as we see an upgrade from 50 to seat to a larger aircraft, then that traffic will be there to support it. A couple of issues that you all probably have had answers for, but if you get asked, and that is, why O'Hare? Well, the problem is, the hubs that we traditionally had service to, i.e. St. Louis, Cincinnati, Nashville, and Memphis, now really don't have those connections anymore. And there are only a handful of hubs left that are available within striking range, Chicago being the most prominent. United and both American are highly competitive in that market. Atlanta has Delta totally just about, and Delta's not interested anymore in regional feed. And Houston is a possibility. So, we're really looking from a point... Three years ago, I could have come before you and said we had a possibility within an aircraft range of 12 hubs, and now it's down, basically, to three. And if any of you missed the Memphis service, four years ago before Delta bought United, that was 100 gates a day in use at the Memphis Airport. Delta, basically, walked out of Memphis, for the most part. Their daily gate requirement now is 35 gates. One concourse will be torn down there. And so, it's a rough market. Question is, is there a pilot shortage? Because we did have a problem with SkyWest with pilot shortages a little over a year ago as they were transitioning. The answer is, on a pay basis, yes. Because if you're going to start out with $120,000 investment to meet the new FAA requirements, law of unintended consequences again, and you're looking at starting pay at a regional carrier of $22,000 to $24,000 a year, that's a rough way to start it. So, we'll see a couple of things, probably, come out of that. Hopefully, FAA easing off on the new increased experience level that came in on a congressional mandate a little over a year back. So, the only other piece of news I had to share with you is that, two weeks ago, we had a three-day, in-depth airport access survey done by a consultant for FEMA. FEMA wanted to know, what can the airport handle in case of a large regional emergency? And we, obviously, think earthquake. We could also think ice storm, because that was an interesting evolution for us as well. And the upshot of it is, particularly because of the presence of the Armed Forces Readiness Center on the airport, it is a critical asset. It's been identified that we could accommodate up to eight C-17 cargo aircraft, which is the second-largest in the Air Force inventory. SCADS of C-130s would be used. And the Armed Forces Readiness Center then becomes, not only a facility for command post and a base for operations for surface transport to and from the airport, it also provides the possibility for housing people who have no access to other housing, such as in the ice storm, and the possibility for medical treatment. And it's really wonderful, because the National Guard facility there is a transportation unit. The Army Reserve is a medical unit. So, this made a big impression with the consultants, and we'll see how this plays out when the report goes in. But it's going to be a highly interesting report, and it's going to indicate the facility, in case of a regional emergency, will be critical for operation. And just closing out, on behalf of the Airport Board, I'd like to express our appreciation for the support that the city has generously given us and the understanding. And if you have any questions, let me know. If any of you need a tour, let me know. If anybody wants to spend midnight at 3:00 a.m. on a snowplow here in a month, let me know. Thanks.
With that on my to-do list, thank you, Richard. Thank you very much. All right. Commissioner Abraham, I believe you have the minutes.
I do, sir.
All right.
I move that the reading of the minutes for November 24th, 2015 City Commission Meeting be waived, and that the minutes of said meetings prepared by the City Clerk be approved, as written.
Second. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes?
Aye. And Commissioner Gault?
I move that the following documents and bids be received and filed. Certificate of Liability Insurance and Right-of-Way Bond for Pinnacle Inc., deed with Bob Hopper and Brenda Hollis for 427 North Sixth Street. Contracts and Agreements Professional Engineering Service Agreement with Bacon Farmer Workman Engineering and Testing, Inc. for Construction Administration and Resident Inspection for Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B. Agreement with Matt Construction and Excavating, Inc. for Riverfront Redevelopment Project Phase 1B. Agreement with Markham Engineering, LLC for Paducah Dome Relocation. Grant Agreement between Paducah Police Department and the Kentucky Transportation Cabinet Office of Highway Safety. Right of First Refusal Agreement with Paducah Riverfront Hotel LP for Lease of 501 North Third Street. Paducah McCracken Joint Sewer Agency Financial Statements for Years Ended June 30th, 2015 and 2014. Transit Authority of Paducah Financial Statements for Years Ended June 30th, 2015. Presidential Development District Financial Statements for Year Ended June 30th, 2015. Paducah Junior College, Inc. Basic Financial Statements for Year Ended June 30th, 2015. Electric Plant Board DBA Paducah Power System Financial Statements for Years Ended June 30th, 2015 and 2014. Bids for Engineering Public Works Department, 1 3/4-ton 4x4 pickup, Paducah Ford, Lynnwood Motors, Larry Stavas and Buick GMC. Bids for Engineering Public Works Department, 2 red four-door sedans, fire prevention, Lynnwood Motors and Paducah Ford.
Second.
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes?
Aye. Okay. Commissioner Wilson?
I move that a municipal order entitled, a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute Amendment Number 1 to the Memorandum of Understanding between the Department of the Army and the City of Paducah for work provided or performed prior to execution of a project partnership agreement for the Ohio River Shoreline Paducah-Kentucky Reconstruction Project be adopted.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner, you recall that the 1st of September, we had a municipal order adopting this amendment... Excuse me. The Memorandum of Understanding between us and the Corps. There was some wordsmithing in that that needed correcting with regards to some of the developments of our pump plants, and so this is just to correct some wording that their office of counsel wanted us to run through this body.
Still very happy?
Yeah.
No. Word restoration versus, what was it, new? So... Power of words. Okay. Shall we vote?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes?
Aye. Thank you. Okay. Ordinance adoption. Mr. Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners adopt an ordinance entitled, an Ordinance of the City of Paducah, Kentucky, authorizing and approving the appropriation of funds for purposes of engaging Federal Engineering, Inc. to perform consulting work for Paducah McCracken County E-911. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance approves and authorizes the appropriation of one-half the funds necessary to engage Federal Engineering, Inc. to perform the first two initial stages of consulting work for Paducah McCracken County E-911 in evaluating the E-911's acquainted system, infrastructure, and planning and designing a replacement system as requested by unanimous vote of the Paducah McCracken County E-911 Board. A copy of this ordinance and the form of the basic document for such transaction will be on file in the office of the City Clerk.
Second.
Okay. All of them. Vote?
Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes?
Aye. Steve, would you like to talk to us about, let's say, I guess, who do you want to speak first, or will Steve speak second?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an Ordinance Approving Change Order Number 1 with Environmental Abatement, Inc. for demolition of a condemned unsafe structure located at 432 Broadway in the City of Paducah, and authorizing the mayor to execute the approved change order. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah hereby approves Change Order Number 1 for an increase in the amount of $20,933 with Environmental Abatement, Inc. for various changes necessary to complete the demolition of the condemned unsafe structure located at 432 Broadway, and to extend the completion date to February 26, 2016, therefore increasing the total cost to $479,618, and authorizing the mayor to execute the approved change order.
Second.
Good evening. On July 21st, 2015, the City Commission adopted an ordinance accepting the bid of Environmental Abatement Incorporated, the amount of $458,000 for the demolition of the condemned unsafe structure at 432 Broadway. After EAI was mobilized and started initial demolition, it was discovered that the existing steel columns that support both the Varney and O'Leary buildings would not support the weight of Varney's exterior wall once 432 Broadway was demolished. Staff procured the services of Adam Bernhoff with Civil Design, Inc. to engineer both temporary shoring of the Varney Building and permanent stabilization of the Varney Building from the exterior of the West Wall, which is Fifth Street. This permanent stabilization will include the construction of an 18-foot masonry wall adjacent to the Varney Building. Additionally, the existing steel columns underneath the steel beam will be reinforced to stabilize the exterior wall of the Varney Building. This work is being done so that further deterioration within the block will not occur. Staff has prepared bid documents for the construction of the 18-foot masonry wall. That would be Contract Number 3, and we're having a bid opening on December 18th. Bids for the steel reinforcement work, Contract 2, were opened on November 20th, and the following agenda item addresses that contract. The City of Paducah has applied for a $500,000 CDVG to offset the cost of the demolition stabilization cost, with $125,000 matched total project cost of $605,000. At this time, we still have not heard whether or not we'll receive that CDVG. EAI has submitted a change order request regarding the 432 Broadway demolition project in amount of $20,933. The change orders relate to remobilization of equipment and includes the following: increased of rental charge for barricades, fence, row plates, et cetera; remobilization of equipment and personnel, both private and rental; property survey, the survey between the Varney and the O'Leary Building; permanent shoring evaluation costs between EAI and Civil Design Group; and the increased contract time of 103 days. The original contract was for November 17th. The contract is part of this amendment, and now is February 26th. And if you have any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. Cheryl's here also, has done a lot of the project management with us, so the two of us.
Is the Varney Building roof, everything with that building, in good shape?
Not necessarily, no, ma'am.
So, will shoring it up? I realize that helps save the block.
Yeah. It's our opinion that if we don't go through this permanent stabilization of the Varney Building, that over a period of time, that we'd be in the same situation we're in with the O'Leary Building, that the building would start coming out into that vacant structure. So, we thought it was wise to go ahead and do the permanent stabilization, to put a permanent cap on there to, basically, protect those structures in perpetuity.
Steve, this action also comes about as a result of some belief that we have some responsibility to the joint property owner, correct?
Yes.
In addition to just the issue of that building potentially falling down, the demolition of the structure at 432 could lead to that. So, that's part of the reason as well.
At one point, Mr. Varney, he didn't need repairing, touching on a lot of brickwork on the back of his building?
On the rear of it, yes.
Hell, you're scowling.
Well...
Or make you scowl.
Yeah. Yeah. Most people can read my faces, usually, and you know why. But that's beside the point.
Anyway, all right. Anything else? You know, being a Commissioner, we always get handed as something less a grand idea. We have to figure out what's the least of the several solutions that go to it, it seems like. I always like the orders and the ordinances where we get to, like, accept money for things. That's a lot of fun. This is not so much. Okay. All right. Mr. Abraham? Steve, thank you very much.
Thank you.
It's me.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce...
It's me.
It's Commissioner Wilson.
Oh, I'm sorry.
But he skipped her.
Did I skip you?
It's me.
Sorry.
It's that great age.
Carry on.
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance conditionally authorizing the non-competitive negotiated award for the steel reinforcing contract for 430-432 Broadway, Paducah, Kentucky, with Darnell Steel and Construction, LLC, in an amount not to exceed $19,750 pursuant to KRS 45A 375, and authorizing the mayor to execute the for said contract. Provided, however, approval is obtained from the Community Development Block Grant Program. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance authorizes a non-competitive award to the sole responsive and responsible bidder for Contract 2 Steel Reinforcing Work, which will reinforce the existing steel columns underneath the steel beam to stabilize the exterior wall of 430 Broadway in Paducah, the building adjacent to and associated with the demolition of 432 Broadway in Paducah, Darnell Steel and Construction, LLC, with a bid amount of $19,750. Provided, however, the award is approved by the Community Development Block Grant Program.
Second.
After this steel reinforcing is complete, at that point, EAI will be back on site to actually start back with the demolition. Last week, the temporary shoring was completed, and that was generally done from the second floor up within the Varney Building. This is the permanent shoring underneath the existing steel beam. After this is complete, once again, three weeks, you'll see the demolition contractors back on site.
All right. Any questions?
Thank you.
Now, Commissioner Abraham?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid for sale to the City of 1 Ford 4x4 quart ton four-door pickup truck, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Paducah Ford in the amount of $28,948 for the sale to the City of 1 Ford 4x4-ton four-door pickup truck for use by the Parks Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Second.
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner, this is actually fulfilling some more of your vehicle replacements in this current fiscal year we're in. This ordinance introduction, as well as the next one.
Questions? All right. Okay. Well, you want to hang around, because I think you're up for the next one. Same response. Commissioner Gault?
I move that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled, an ordinance accepting the bid of Lynnwood Motors for sale to the City of 2 2016 Dodge Charger SSV vehicles for use by the Fire Prevention Division of the Paducah Fire Department, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. This ordinance is summarized as follows. The City of Paducah accepts the bid of Lynnwood Motors in the total amount of $53,146 for 2 2016 Dodge Charger SSV vehicles for use by the Fire Prevention Division of Paducah Fire Department, and authorizes the mayor to execute a contract for same.
Same thing, just different department.
So, I made my comment. You know, my old ways, as I've shared with Commissioner Abraham, because we're buying, crazy to sound, because of buying a police car or an inspection department, though it sounds nonsensical, it makes great financial sense, because we can actually buy cheaper than if we just bought a plain sedan. You'd say, well, why would that be? Because Chrysler Corporation wants to have plenty of police-type vehicles out there, are willing to incentivize, plenty of money to make it happen.
No, there's also...
And then there's the longevity thing, too.
Well, there's also the technological thing as well.
Yeah, with the...
A lot of... The technology is moving to vehicles as well. For example, your police department, they have mobile data terminals. I mean, they're basically a computer inside of a police vehicle that gives access to all the records that the city has, or what they need. And then also, with the inspections department, they're doing a lot of their, I guess, notifications, and their clerical work is actually being... A lot of it's being done in the vehicle in real time. So, the mobile data terminal and the features that are in these vehicles help that department such that you don't have, I guess, a code enforcement officer going out, collecting information, bringing that information back to City Hall, handing it to clerical staff, and then say, write this up, put it in the mail. They're actually doing things in real time. So, it's a technological advantage to do things onsite with that, and taking some of the clerical work off of the staff and putting it in real time in the field. So, there's an advantage to that. So...
All right. Thanks so much. Okay. Mr. City Manager?
I just have a request for executive session.
All right. And...
I got it.
Okay. Ladies, gentlemen, comments?
No.
No comments.
Christmas parade this weekend, right? Mark, you want to talk about that?
Give me a second.
Does it start at 5:00?
Yes.
Okay. New route?
Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner, yes, the parade is on Saturday. It follows right after the ugly sweater run, so anybody wants to come up and jump up and run the route a mile downtown, we're more than glad to have them join us in a ugly sweater run. And then, at 5:00, the parade kicks off at about 14th Street, right in front of the Police Department. It'll go down Broadway until you get to 7th Street. 7th Street, we will take a left, and then a right onto Jefferson, and finish up on 2nd and Jefferson as we go down. And a lot of that has to do with what Steve brought up earlier, so where we're headed.
I know you looked at every way to keep it on Broadway.
Our preference would be, most definitely, to be on Broadway, but from the safety and security of the folks out there, I think it's best to keep it.
Well, it also had to do with some one-way streets. You couldn't...
Right. Well, we've got the situation with the state highways running through 3rd and 4th Street are state highways, and to turn and block that with the parade, that area would be blocked for an hour. If you go back to try to get to the south side, the closest street would be go to 21st Street. And that would be... That could be difficult for the police department and any of those services.
I know you visited with some of the business owners, too. I'm just going to go ahead and say thank you for doing that, and to explain to them their situation for this year.
Hopefully, we'll be back on track next year. But we're looking forward to it.
Better.
But looking forward to it, and then next week, we will have all the awards here next Tuesday evening.
Great. Great.
Looking forward to it. See y'all there.
Get the run.
Y'all need to be there at 4:30, no later.
At the police headquarters.
What if we run the race?
Just get there as quick as you can.
All right. With that, let's see, if you'll...
All right. I move that the Board go into closed session for discussion of matters pertaining to the following topic: proposed or pending litigation, as permitted by KRS 61.8101C.
Second.
Second.
Your vote?
Yes. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Commissioner Gault?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes?
Aye.
We have a separate motion on the person...
We have a separate motion on personnel. I wanted that, too.
Was there a second one?
I'm sorry you didn't get that.
Can you just add it? Can we go ahead and add it?
Yeah, we can add it.
Thank you.
Also adding issues which might lead to the appointment, dismissal, or discipling of an employee, is that it? As permitted by KRS 61.8101F.
Second.
Do we vote?
Need to vote again? Yes, we can. Commissioner Abraham?
Aye.
Mr. Gault?
Aye.
Mr. Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Pro Tim Rhodes?
Aye. Okay, and since the only person who's a civilian is, Lauren, I presume you have no comment from the audience, then we'll stand adjourned. Thanks.